Good evening, everyone. Call a meeting to order. Recker, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any changes or additions to the agenda before we move to our consent agenda? I've just passed out a letter that I opened today, and this is from Algecooley, and they're looking for approval for their engagement in the Highway One project, any of the work that they do for us on eminent domain or any of the other issues that come up. Obviously, that project is -- will get started, but really isn't going to be constructed for a few years. But we do need a vote of approval for the letter, so I'll bring that up during my report, but if you'll just review that, and then we'll discuss it at that time. So then we'll move to our consent agenda, and this evening we have approval of minutes from the August 12th council meeting, approval of the August 23rd payroll of $118,571.40, approval of the USDA Step One debt in the amount of $12,975. I don't have an amount for the interim finance with that. Approval of the Co-Bank interim financing debt in the amount of $45,278.25, approval of the July Finance Report, approval of the Park Use Permit for Climate Action Iowa, a noise exemption, acceptance of library minutes and beautification minutes, and, let's see, accept resolution of employment in the Park and Recreation Department, a building supervisor. We have approval of a liquor license for Pep Stop and approval of claims in the amount of $356,598.97, of which PKG Construction has $237,768.11. Any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Actually, I had a question on the park use permit. They didn't put what park down. He just put his name down underneath the line. I'm not sure which park they're intending to use.
Central Park.
Central Park. All right. Okay.
Great. Okay, any other questions, counsel? Now, I obtain a motion to approve.
Move.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Discussion, please call the roll.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we'll move to our public appearances, and first this evening, representing the Better Angels of Iowa, Joe and Julie Mandarino, come up to the podium.
Thank you.
Counsel, if you haven't been at -- met Joe and Julie in the past, they were the donors to the skate park in Obi Nelson that was constructed several years ago, and we still really appreciate your contribution.
Still kids there.
And what we have there. I know there are, yeah. I go down there often myself, so, not skating, but, anyway. Your presentation, go ahead.
Yes. I'm going to speak, which is unusual, but I'm going to speak just because we have a few minutes, but Julie's here to join me, or maybe she should just sit. Yeah. I want to talk about Better Angels. So first, we're going to tell a little story. In 1861, Abraham Lincoln facing a civil war, hadn't happened yet, but he was -- he used his first inaugural address before the states had seceded, and he said this to his opponents. He said, "We are not enemies, but friends. We must not be enemies. Though passion may have strained them, they must not break our bonds of affection." He then went on to appeal to a future he could see, probably many others couldn't, where he called on the better angel, these are his words, "The better angels of our nature, when they will prevail and bring us back together." Now, it's in this spirit that the organization Better Angels was named and formed in 2016. You might wonder why 2016? The answer is obvious, that the goal of the organization was to reduce the political polarization that seemed to be getting out of hand, and by doing this, by bringing what we call reds, people on the right side of the political spectrum, and what we call blues, people on the left side of the political spectrum, they learn, they bring them together so they can learn how to reconnect as Americans and to be friends despite their differences of opinions. Now, Julie and I are trained as moderators. We're the first ones in Iowa, and we have been speaking and offering workshops in Fairfield for the last 14, 15 months. We've done 10 different workshops, approaching 100 people, and we want to just talk a little bit about what this is about. First of all, in approaching the political divisions that we see in our nation and even in our community, we see what you all see, whether you're looking at social media, you're looking at the agenda-driven news media, you're looking to our political leaders, unfortunately. We see a conflict, a conflict that is emotional, where it goes way beyond just differences in opinion. And what we see are each side blaming the other. There's each side having anger bordering on hatred of the other side. Each side shunning the others in something that sociologists are calling social sorting, where people are actually sorting themselves into groups of like-minded people, where they no longer talk to people who have different opinions. They unfriend people on Facebook that they don't like anymore, and they're creating a world in which they have people around them whose views are sympathetic to theirs, and they're intolerant of anyone who has views that are different. And also, each side has the list, and the list is that list of things that the other side is or has done, that you're always so easy and quick to point out to justify your righteous anger toward them. Now, here's the interesting thing. An internationally-known marriage therapist, I didn't know him, but Julie did, because she's a former psychology professor at Iowa Wesleyan, his name is Bill Doherty, he noticed something. It turns out that these traits of the national political conflict are strikingly similar to that of a couple in relationship that is in conflict, that he might see in therapy. What does he see? Blaming the other person, anger toward the other person, shunning, also known as the cold shoulder of the other, to the other person, and of course, there's the list. Anybody in a long-term relationship knows the list, which are those things that your partner brings out that never seem to forget, that you said or did years in the past, but when she or he is angry, those things come out. Now, he looked at this, and he said, "Wow, this is the same thing going on here, and is there, could it be that the same techniques that I use in marriage therapy, relationship therapy, could those be used on a group basis for this political crisis that we seem to be in?" And to that end, he was one of the founders of Better Angels in 2016, and he structured workshops using basically marital therapy tools and techniques to help both sides learn to listen and understand each other, and how to decrease the tension and the ranker that's going on between them. And these workshops have been held all across the country to excellent results, I think, and their goal is to bring us back to being friends despite our differences. We call our workshop, in fact, Friends With Differences, and it's basically marital therapy on a group level, okay? Now, I don't have a lot of time, so I'm just going to tell you the three basic principles that these workshops are guided by. The first principle is, we treat those with opinions different than ours with respect. We understand, or we should understand, they probably have an important perspective to offer. We may not agree, but there's something important there. Principle number two, we seek to understand those, the opinions of those who may differ from us. Even if we disagree, our goal is to at least understand it. And the third point, which I think is the most important, we engage the best arguments of the other side. We don't engage the worst. We could spend all day doing that. Look what he did. Look what he did. You know, "But she did that, your leader did this." "Yes, but your leader did this." That's what basically is going on, and that goes up, can go on all day. But if you were asked, "Well, what's the best argument on the other side about whatever issue that might be, you know, a hot button, whether you're talking about, you know, gun rights, or abortion rights, or climate change, or whatever, if you're on one side or the other, can you accurately describe what their best argument is? Or are you just fond of pointing out what's the worst?" Okay. So, that's what our workshops are about. They're a lot of fun. They happen through, they're three hours, they're free. We do this as community service. But I want to conclude with just to note something. If in this three or four or five minutes, whatever I've been speaking, if you thought of someone, what I'm talking about, on the other side of your political spectrum, say, that might be difficult to talk to, or you might see them as kind of closed-minded, and you kind of thought, "Whoa, they could really use this." I have a sobering thought for you. They're probably thinking the same thing of you, and Better Angels is targeting both of you. And so we do workshops quarter a monthly. The Fairfield Library is very supportive of us. They allow us to use their room, and our next one is September 14th, and as I said, they're free. We do it as community service, and if anyone happened to be interesting, interested, you could talk to one of us. We have a little card that has our email address, or you can just go to joeandjulie, J-O-E-A-N-D-J-U-L-I-E, joeandjulie.com, and it's free to register. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention, because it's turning out to be something much better than we ever thought. We just kind of did this on the lark, and it's turning out to be pretty good.
Great. Thank you, Joe and Julie. We, yes, we appreciate the presentation. Counsel, any comments or questions?
Well, I've taken the workshops, and I would endorse their program wholeheartedly.
Yeah. Yeah, I went to actually Doug's, Councilman Flornoy's recommendation, and I enjoyed it. It was worthwhile.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for doing that. You know, I would just say that, you know, fortunately, their temperatures don't get too high with our group. You know, Iowa Legislature and their wisdom made local elections nonpartisan, so we don't run on party, and I think you'll just have to guess who's a D and who's an R out on here, so we basically try to...
I don't know who you are.
We, no, we do, but, you know, the thing is, there's also kind of a setting, a tone of consensus within, you know, doing the work of, on behalf of the people in the community, and I think that's what we take as our sort of sovereign responsibility, and it works, because this group really does work very well together. You know, there are differences of opinion, but, you know, all voices are heard without any ranker, without any emotion, or a little emotion, and we get through this pretty well. But we're so happy that this is going on in the community, and thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add, we didn't come here trying to recruit you to our workshops. We came here partly to just inform you of what's going on, so you're aware of it, and secondly, if we had anything to ask, it would be just your stamp of approval or your support, so if you hear other people talking about it, or something comes up, you'll know what it is if you wanted to refer anybody to us. That's really what we're here for.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay, next counsel, we have a request for street closure for a car show. Is a representative here for that?
Yes. I'm Chris Bedden, and I know the car community. I've been in and out of it for about the last 20 years now, and Fairfield had, I mean, I think we have one annual car show here, and I go to events in Kansas City, Davenport, Des Moines, almost every weekend, and I've been able to draw a lot of that crowd down here for this event, so basically, I'm just asking for your guys' permission to get that closure and bring all these people in, not only to support the car community, but also the business of Shoka, which I think they would do really well with.
What's the connection with Shoka? I was...
Shoka, I've just known the owner for a while, and, of course, he, his wife has cars and...
Are they sponsors for the...
Yes. Yeah, they're going to be giving out, anybody that's entering the car show, they'll get, I think, $10 off, a $30 meal, so.
Terrific. Well, yeah, I know we've had, we've had two in the past, but I know one of the, one of the producers hasn't done it in a couple of years, so, yeah, I think we'd welcome another opportunity. And I think we have already approved a car show for, I think, two weeks after yours, so September seems to be car show month.
Yeah, right before it gets cold, and you've got to put everything away.
Right. Okay. So counsel, you have, I think, a map of what we're looking to close, and it looks like it is just that west half of Broadway and the north half of Main, and the day, the actual day of the week is...
The 7th on a Saturday.
Saturday. Okay. So what we generally like to ask you to do is to communicate with all of the store owners, particularly those that would be affected. The other thing, too, is when we've done it in the past, there had, there's been some, a lane open for cars to get sort of behind the show. I'm not sure whether we can do that on Main Street, though, so that was probably going to have to be fully closed.
Is the expectation that it's going to be our barricades going up?
No.
You've got barricades?
Yep.
Okay. And you've got the manpower to get them up and down and...
Yep.
Okay.
How many cars do you expect to...
Currently, I have 100 people registered.
Each with one car?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion by Anderson, second by Flornoy, to approve the request. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Good, we'll look forward to seeing you down there. Okay, counsel, now we'll move to our action items and ordinances, and the first is the second reading of the definition to clarify signage and street naming and sign placement. We have had one reading of this. We do have a citizen here this evening who would like to talk about the ordinance, so I'll open the public hearing at this time and invite Rick Shattuck to address counsel.
Thank you.
I have a paper for everybody.
I think I've got that. I've got it there already. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say that we should honor those who contribute a lot to the community. If anybody should have a street named after them, it should be Mayor Malloy, Mayor Rasmussen. And this may seem like a trivial issue, but it comes down to our First Amendment rights in the Constitution and the Fourth Amendment, the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, and against unreasonable searches and seizures. So as I understand it, this proposed motion would allow the seizure of the sign, which, as you see on the paper that I passed out, is clearly on my property. It's sufficiently on private land. It's not on the parkway area that they call, between the street and the sidewalk. It's significantly on to my land. And the idea of putting a street sign with the name Shattuck and Faircrest was indicated by the way that the trash pickup has to go all the way down towards 4th Street and then back up just for my trash, and they could take a shortcut from Carpenter Street to Merrill. But I was told by the Waste Management that they only pick up trash from streets that have a name, so, thought of a name. Nobody had given that name to the alley behind my house before, and I don't think it would be causing any confusion. Iowa has an average IQ of 103, which puts it at eight in the nation. At the top is Massachusetts with Harvard and MIT, but I was pretty up there. I don't think people would be confused, someone driving up the alley and, "Wow, this street used to have no name, and now it has a name, and I'm lost." I don't think that's going to happen, and it's not like there's an epidemic of street signs going up around Fairfield, you know, Smith Street, Jones Street, Brown Street, where this is needing to add to the regulations that we have in the town. So Iowa's motto is, "Our liberties we prize, and our rights we shall maintain." So if there's any right we can keep, that would be good, unless there's a real problem with street signs going up, and especially if they're on the person's property. So I'm asking, where do we draw the line? If I had put the street sign in my living room, nobody would object, or if I put it in the backyard, let's say about here, nobody would object, and as it gets closer to the street, but still on my property, there's an objection. So my argument is that this sign is part of our freedom of expression, and maybe we should allow more people to put signs up, to inspire them to live in Fairfield. We're all pioneers here. We're living in a place where it's kind of a challenge to make a living here as compared to other places. My wife and I have a condo in Washington, DC, and there it's very easy to make a living. It's the overpayment capital of the world, and...
Well, Ms. Shatt, let me just hold you there, because I think there's an assumption that the sign is not going to be allowed, you know, with the ordinance, the ordinance isn't really asking you to take down the signs, it's basically asking you not to confuse them with city-platted streets that are signed. They're just being asked to be a different color, essentially, so that that confusion is not there. Is that correct from the committee members?
Yes.
Okay. So is there an objection to changing the color of the sign? I know that you, I know that there's been money spent on those signs. I can see that, and if that's your objection, then it's different than not being allowed to have the sign, so...
Well, that's very nice.
Were you aware of that? Were you aware that that was what was intended? So we're not asking you to take the sign down, just...
Okay. Well, I'm also proposing that we don't add any new codes that we don't have to. If, you know, if I were to agree to, you know, go back to streetsigns.com, where you can buy a sign with whatever name you want, and it's a legal business, and they probably sell a lot of signs, and I'm saying that since this is such an unusual situation, I mean, who else but Rick Shattuck would do this? It's not, it hasn't happened before. It's not likely to happen again, and so if we adopt the approach of President Trump, that if we add a regulation, we should take away other unneeded regulations. So is this really worth, with that mindset, adding another, you know, it's another, like, paragraph related to this, let's consider what other regulation would be good to take away. And I did ask all the neighbors. I asked Harvey Hensley and Blaine Cruz and Katrien Faircrest, a very heroic, single mom who's brought her child up, and I thought, I agree that she deserves a street sign. We have a problem with not enough families coming here in Fairfield, and a global problem of global dumbing. These high IQs, successful families are not having so many kids, but those who are often on welfare are having many kids, so that's a problem.
Well, I just want to go back, Ms. Shattuck, if I could just go back to the committee members who vetted the ordinance and basically put it together. Are there other, are there other concerns that we have, for instance, emergency response?
The biggest concern, I thought, was if someone had an accident right here and called 911 and looked up and saw that sign, they would say, "This is the address."
Right.
And 911 would not know where to go.
Right.
They don't have it listed because it's not a real sign.
It's not listed on their GPS, I mean, it's just not part of the city plot, so...
Well, I did, I did call them and ask them to put it in the records, and the 911 operator said that, you know, it is in the records in case anybody does that. But also, I'd go back to...
Well, do you have an objection to changing it to a red-colored sign?
Um...
I know of two other examples, one here in town where they do have signage up like this. It's not green and white on green, it's white on red.
Yeah.
Would you, would you object to that?
Uh, no. I don't want to cause any trouble, and, you know, especially, I feel, I don't want to oppose Sergeant Vaughn, who is a man who would go into our house to risk his life to, if our houses were burning down. So it's great that we have someone to enforce the law here in Fairfield, but this is kind of like, there wasn't a code, and let's create a code that can then be enforced, and I think if, it's supposed to be bottom-up, the public is demanding, "Oh, there's so many, there's street signs going up, there's Jones Street, Smith Street, I don't know where I am," and then we have to make a regulation, but this seems to be kind of top-down instead of grassroots-up.
Well, I think Scott can speak to this, but we have other regulations that regulate what you can do and can't do on private property, so you don't cause a distraction for traffic, for example. So it's not, there is a precedence for this.
Could we have Chief Vaughn just address for a second here for the counsel, so just to kind of keep this moving?
I'll just answer that. IQ, Iowans have an average IQ of 103, so I don't think they would be so confused.
So as far as the street sign goes, it's nothing that's going to be in the 911 system as a street that is recognized by the city, that when you call 911, they're going to know, that's not going to come up on their screen, and that's our biggest concern with this. He's got a, I think it's a rooming house for, what, four bedrooms? If it's full.
Sometimes.
If it's full. They're all parking right back there. That's where the parking for the house is, and if they have an emergency, last thing they see when they park is that sign, and that's what they're going to probably be calling in the way of 911 if they need it, and we've got an ambulance service that employs a lot of people from time to time that are from out of town, so they're going to have no clue, especially with GPS, where that's going to be. We've got new officers, police officers, right now that are, you know, new to the area, so that's our, one of our biggest concerns where, like you said, if the sign's red or if it's black, you know, it's not... You know, confused with the green street signs that we recognize as ones that the city has named.
Chief Vaughn, there's, are there others in town that are, that have some similar things, so...
Yep. North Campus...
The trailer park.
Yeah, the trailer park by Connolly's. They've got signs that recognize each row, and they are black signs, so that's what, like he said, we're not saying you can't do it, but, you know, just to switch that color, so it does not mirror our city signs and cause confusion.
Right. And I think I understand that. I just think that, you know, I don't know that we're really trying to layer something on as much as we are refining our responsibility for public safety, and this is, this has come up in that light, and I think if you talk to anyone who has been in a situation where there has been any confusion and they have lost minutes with, of response time because of vehicles, it's a, it's generally a situation you don't want to be aware of because it could be the difference between life and death. So we do take the refinement of that from a public safety standpoint seriously, and I think that's why this comes up. It's not necessarily looking to layer that, and very smart people in emergency situations sometimes are emotionally gripped, and not all of their intellectual capacity is there, so we want to be sure that everything is within the system that is set up right now. And Chief is right, that the E-911 system is very specific and tied to addresses that are recognized on platted streets at this point, so we'd like to see you keep your signs, but we'd just like to see them changed. So, we'd like to see you keep your signs, but we'd just like to see them changed to something that reflects the difference between the street signs and a private sign. So, counsel, anything else to add to that?
I just want to assure you that we didn't go looking for this, the committee has a list a mile long that we're trying to work through. So this wasn't an issue that we went out and sought, it was brought to our attention that it was a concern, and it was a safety concern, and thus, it got put on our agenda. So, rest assured, we weren't looking for more ways to make our ordinances harder to read. We were, we were presented with a situation, and we took the, the appropriate action after that.
Okay.
Okay, well, I would stipulate, or request, if, you know, I'll change the sign, is blue, okay?
Sure.
Green and white is the city, is the city street sign, so if you want blue and white, purple and white, orange and blue, you can have whatever you want.
Okay.
Iowa State colors are awesome.
I'd like to make-
Black and gold's better.
-a contribution to the community, but I don't want my contribution to be more regulations.
We definitely understand your point there, and we, we, you know, I think that is duly noted, but, you know, our, our intention of working on behalf of the whole community is something that we, we also take seriously, too.
Speaking of Iowa State and the Hawkeye, I mean, if they start popping up green and white Hawkeye Avenue and Cyclone Way, you know, I mean, there can be six of those in town in no time.
That's true.
I mean, Shattuck, it's gonna be the only one, but there's other ones that can be duplicated, which would add to the confusion.
All right, thank you, and we'll register your complaint on that, and appreciate your-
Named after your former mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments regarding the ordinance? Now, we'll close the public hearing at this time, and ask for a motion to move this from the second to the third reading.
So moved.
Second by Flornoy. Second by Anderson. Discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gandhi?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Now, counsel, the letter that we have passed out, opened today, and this was from Allers and Cooney, and they will be representing the city on behalf of the Highway One project that'll be done over the next couple of years, and they need authorization for the letter that you have endorsing the, the fees associated on an hourly basis with their attorneys and representation. They obviously are the firm that we use pretty exclusively in this area, so I'd like to ask for your approval on the letter this evening, so that we can get this back to them.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Thompson, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you. Now, I'll move to our committee and board reports, Public Safety Committee.
Just wanted to give a quick update on a meeting. I sat in more as a facilitator, not a decision-maker in this. We had the county engineer and one of the county supervisors come to City Hall and meet with our city administrator and our public works director to discuss Gear Avenue, and if there was any additional safety upgrades that could be made there, to deal with the issues that we've been seeing with close calls at the intersection of 18th. And the group decided that moving, these two actions, moving the 25 miles per hour speed limit sign that's currently east of 12th Street, to directly south of the county's 45 speed limit sign would be a good idea. That creates a speed zone, so everything east of those two signs is 25, and everything west is 45. And instead of doing a step-down from 45 to 35 to 25, the consensus of the group was to install a sign that is 25 miles per hour speed limit ahead sign, and that would be east of 18th Street. The thing about these signs is they fool a lot of us into thinking they're actually a speed limit sign. So that's the idea, is it's a little bit of a warning that you're about to enter a 25 mile per hour zone, so heads up. And aside from this, both the county and city have put reflective, what is it, not tape, reflective tape?
It's metal.
Metal, okay. Reflective surface on the stop signs on both 18th and Kelp. Also, the approaches to both those stop signs have signs that tell you there's a stop ahead, and they both have cross-traffic doesn't stop on the stop sign. So, county reps and city reps feel like this is kind of the end of upgrades that will be made at this time, at that intersection. Perhaps some additional law enforcement may help to assure that the people who are traveling across gear actually stop at the intersection, but there's no way at this point that any half-aware driver would not know there's a stop sign there. It's not really the issue, it's just they're not using it. They're apparently using it more as a yield sign, or as a rolling stop. So, just wanted to give that update, and we're gonna take this off our table for public safety at this time, and these were not issues that needed counsel vote, they're just signs that the city public works department can, can handle themselves.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman, appreciate that. Next, we'll move to our administrative report. Aaron, anything for this week?
Actually, most of the stuff I've been working on, I, I've already talked about, the finance, finances with Travis Squires. We had a meet, conversation with him that, last week, and he's, he needed some more information so we can be, do a better job of tracking our expenses and our revenues coming in, to have a better idea on how we can invest what we have on hand, so that we can stretch our dollars a little bit more. Been working with the ambulance committee, and getting things set up to have a conversation with Henry County, and hopefully that'll get things moving forward a little bit quicker than we've been moving at this point. So, find out how that, if, if that's a feasible thing with Henry County, and then if we have to change, then we can change, so. Those are probably the two highlights for the past two weeks.
You need to hit the highlight there on your beggars night.
Yeah, our police chief isn't here.
That's a very important date in this town.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the police chief did set the, notice I said, the police chief has set the trick-or-treat night for Thursday, October 31st, at 5:30 to 8:00 PM. Fall brush pickup and Hydra flushing will be October 1st, and that's all I've got.
Great. The fall brush pickup will be October 7th.
October 7th, sorry.
And the flushing, October 1st, and please don't put your materials out there before September 30th, so. Okay. Thank you for your report. Any other business for the council? Now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to approve.
Move by Rasmussen, second by Toohill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, meaning adjourn.